This is NHTV2, North Haven Government Television, a service of North Haven Community Television. The following program is brought to you through the support of... ...the town of North Haven.
Let's call the March 14, 2024 regular meeting for the North Haven Board of Education to order at 6:30 PM. I'd like to thank everyone for coming. Before we get started today, I would just like to announce that Murray Devlin has resigned from the board, and then a new member will be appointed shortly. I believe that has to go through the selectmen's meeting for approval, so it'll be... I would think by next month's, our next month's meeting will have a new member. And at that time, I'll introduce him or her, and they can give you a little synopsis about their... Their... Themselves on the way to the board. May I have a motion to approve the February 8, 2024 Board of Education regular meeting minutes?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So moved. Student representative reports? Go ahead, Joe.
So, winter sports just wrapped up. There's actually the banquet tonight down in the auditorium, and we'd like to congratulate women's fencing. The women's EPE squad won the 2024 CT State Championship, and men's foil won the Central CT Fencing Conference Championship. In basketball, the boys and girls team hosted an unprecedented CIAC tournament, doubles header at home, and both teams won. The boys pulling off a double overtime thriller victory to advance into the States, and the boys advanced to CIAC quarterfinals before falling to number five, Bunnel. In cheerleading, we congratulate them on an amazing season, and which includes them winning the SEC Championship, placing second in the state championship, and competing in the Team of the Year competition in New England Regionals. For boys hockey, they qualified for the postseason and lost the first round against North Branford. We wish them a good season. For girls hockey, our co-op team with Amity and Cheshire advanced to the SEC semifinals in the first round of the state tournament. North Haven's Amelia Brandy was the team's most valuable player. We congratulate her. Indoor track, Nico Boyle took third in the 3200 meter race at the state open, setting a new school record of nine minutes 25 seconds in the two-mile event, and placed 10th in the regionals for this event. Rifle, we had 60% of the team brand-new to the sport. The team placed fifth in States. Boys Swimming and Diving, our boys swimming and diving co-op with East Haven and Guilford had a very successful season, finishing third in a very competitive SEC and placing the majority of their swimmers in the class Double L Finals on March 12. Wrestling, in its second season, the team had a winning record highlighted by Jase Imuno placing fourth in the Class M Wrestling State Tournament at 150 pounds, making him All-State.
In academic news, North Haven High School is the Yukon Top 10 of high schools with the largest, or with the highest enrollment increase in the Yukon Early College Experience Program, at a plus 135% in the past school year. Junior planning meetings are also going on, and North Haven High School counselors are welcoming junior parents for planning meetings with their children, focusing on post-high school academic and career planning. The SATs, the NGSS, and the World Language SEAL and Bilinguality Test are taking place now and soon. Teachers have been working hard to ensure that students are prepared. Best of luck to our students. And the end of marking period three. The marking period ends in about three weeks on April 3, 2024. We are encouraging students to the end of the marking period, to end up marking period strong. For community service news, North Haven High School students and faculty continue to lead charitable community outreach work, including gift donations to the Smiloe Children's Hospital, which is being done by the National Honor Society, and feeding the homeless, which is being done by the First Priority Club. And recently, the high school did Bye Bye Birdie, so thank you to everyone involved in the hugely successful all-school musical Bye Bye Birdie. Over four performances, our audience and our audience were thrilled by the talent, hard work of our actors, singers, musicians, and set builders. So thank you to everyone.
Good job, guys.
Can I just say real quick?
Sure.
Bye Bye Birdie was phenomenal. The sets were amazing, and the kids did such a good job. It was very impressive. And we could hear everything crystal clear, too, so I don't know what happened with the audio this time, but it was great. Like, it was really good.
They have to do with the wallpaper. They have to do with the sound.
It was really good.
Well, thank you, guys. You're welcome to stay or leave. It's your pleasure. We're gonna move on to public comments. All the comment in this session will be for non-agenda items. If you have something you'd like to address, come on up to the mic, speak your name and address, and...
Hello, everyone. My name is Chris Katana with ATJana Drive, and I'm here on behalf of the soccer club. I heard there was potential that proposals the soccer club made would be discussed tonight, so I just wanted to add to that discussion before it was fully discussed or possibly discussed by you guys. Last year, hundreds of NHSC stakeholders supported the bonding package that led to the installation of lights at the multi-use field over at the athletic complex, right next to the tennis courts, it's the grass field. And for our club especially, it would be incredibly useful, because we're growing literally every season. Like, there's almost 700 players just this spring from North Haven, so... The ability to use that field will be a great thing for our young athletes. However, the usage fees associated with the athletic complex multi-use field have kind of held us back. Compared to other towns, our registration fees are super low. They're probably about half the cost of, you know, Cheshire or Wall. So with that said, we've held back from paying or looking into further paying those fees. But that's not the primary reason I'm here. It's really player safety is an issue with the goal situation on that field. So before we would invest money into a rental facility or using the field at all, we'd like to help the situation by donating or paying for two brand-new goals. I understand the Athletic Ad hoc Committee has been working on fees and costs before using that multi-use field, so... The calculations I used were based on what Howard shared with the soccer club a couple of years ago about how much it would cost. So the soccer club, we would like to purchase those two brand-new full-size goals, and in return, we'd like the ability to use that field for three years without fees. The cost of the goals is between $9,000 and $10,000. So, you know, as a club trying to grow the program even more, and really take care of the children, I coach, they're now sixth graders, and 12 of them made the middle school team this year. And literally watching those games is a little bit frightening, because you could lean on the goal and the entire, you know, eight-foot-high, 24-foot metal contraption will shift. So it's a little bit nerve-wracking, and I think whether or not you guys decide to vote on this or discuss it further tonight, I think those goals need to be addressed one way or another before anybody rents that facility. That's pretty much all I've got.
Okay. Randy Peterson is the chair of the committee that's looking over the funding and how we're gonna start charging. We had to cancel this month. We'll get back on it next month, but we'll be talking about this prior to that, because I know your season starts middle of next month.
We start in about three weeks.
Okay, so into the first week of, like, the eight, nine kind of thing? I don't know. I'm not so sure that I can get resolution on that before then. My question to you would be, and we appreciate that you want to donate the nets. Is this something where we call you up and say, "Yeah, we can do the nets"? Do the nets take a day, a month, or two months to get? I don't know.
Supposedly, you know, according to their...
I know, things change.
Right. They will deliver, they will start shipping within five to seven days.
Five to seven weeks?
Five to seven days.
Oh, days?
And historically, when we've ordered goals, we would have them sent to Public Works.
Yeah.
They would put them together.
Right, and then install.
We'd buy them lunch. Everybody'd be happy.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I got you. So I was, I'm just saying out loud, the whole process from order to install should be two weeks, kind of?
I think at minimum, at least two weeks.
Week to get, week to put in, two weeks to get, a week to put in? Okay. I'm just trying to sort out my mind when your leak starts and when those nets are actually available to you if we decide to move ahead.
Right.
So you'd be, how long is your season?
Eight to 10 weeks.
Okay, so you'd be at least a quarter or more into your season?
Yeah, and we're not asking for a lifetime of fee-free access.
Right, yeah, you're talking about three years, right?
Three years, I figured was, it's probably a little more financially in your favor as far as the cost, I would imagine, but I figured that was a fair number, and yeah, just looking out for the kids.
And just so I'm sure, you were saying those nets are like eight to 10?
That's, that's one of them right there.
No, dollars?
For...
Eight to 10,000?
Yes.
Dollars?
We priced it out last night. It came just in over, I think it was 92 and change, including shipping.
Okay, okay.
Can I ask a question?
Sure, absolutely. I'm gonna...
Oh, do those wheels lock?
Yes.
Okay, so it's stable?
Yeah. We would order one with the wheels. It makes Public Works' job a lot easier.
Can I get back to the board? Yeah, they can hear you.
Yeah, I can see them. Got it. You're having trouble hearing? I got a big mouth, I know. Thank everybody for showing up. I know you guys are not down the street, so thank you for making time to participate. What he's saying is that they would like to donate two goals at a cost of approximately $10,000 to use the fields free for three years. That's the super short version. Takes a week to two to get the nets, another week to two to put them together. Their season starts the first week of April. I told them, Randy, I told them that you were in charge of that committee, that we would need to talk about the usage fees and how the nets work into that, and that we would try to maybe get together, even if it's just me and you, to talk about some basics, to present to the rest of the board, to try and get something for them for next month. Even if we don't have everything we're working on resolved, if we can just talk about maybe that one thing. So I just, Alenny, I'm gonna go right around to everybody. Go ahead, Alenny, you can start.
Okay. I just wanted to ask, I thought that was what the conversation was. I wanted to ask if when Randy's meeting for update, can we discuss this altogether? Do we have the emotion to discuss it?
Yep.
Because there seems to be less than...
Well, the subcommittee can discuss it, and then as we form a more concrete idea, we'll present it to everybody. So a decision won't be made without the entire committee knowing about what's going on. Is that what you were asking me? And the end, first week of April? Yeah, and I had mentioned that they may not be until you're three, four weeks into the season before this thing is resolved, bought and installed, if we agree to it. I don't think, it definitely can't get done, I don't think, before the season starts. They're only three weeks away. That means that we would have to meet... I'm sorry?
Our decision can be made with the thing before the season, or you'll get the goals to come in?
The goals. The goals. I think a decision can be made, even if the committee doesn't agree on all the fee structures for everything. Maybe we can just break this out, resolve it, and then move on to all the things, and I would like to try to get this one thing resolved by our next meeting so that they can get going. It's gonna be weeks before, it's gonna be weeks before, at least two weeks before we can get an answer together. Myself, Randy, Goldie, get it together and then present it to the committee for questions, and then, you know, it's gonna be a couple of days. I gotta wait for response. So you're already into that third week almost when their season starts, so I would say best case, they're gonna be two or three weeks into their season before the nets come if we agree. Does that make sense?
Yeah, it makes sense.
Okay. We can, we will, we will. We're just doing the straight structure, the fee structure part for just this, and then I'll get everybody involved. Just the subcommittee will do that, and then I'll get everybody involved to discuss it. Okay? Marty, how are you? Marty? Tyce? Ty, how are you? Do you have any questions?
No, I'm not. I was fine with it.
What do you, what do you got, Marty? Anything?
He said it was fine.
You said it was fine?
Yeah.
I can't understand what he said. Randy?
No, I'm fine. I understand you're not, you're not, too.
Okay, thank you. Randy?
No, I don't have any questions. I, I, a couple of things. So, Alenny, we have to, and I was going to say later, but we didn't have our name, because we were down, because our city was Marie, we're not able to work. So we have to replace that person on the committee, but all, part of the plan of the conversation was to be reasonable and just talk to him about the equipment, and, you know, the staff and everything, and just kind of go from there, see what he has, and if he has something, probably show a place to equipment. I don't know if he did or not, but I think he should definitely be part of the conversation. I understand the timing and the opportunity for sure, so we can definitely do this as quickly as we can, but I want to make sure that we're thorough and make the right decision.
Can you get me just some contact information in case a question comes up as we discuss this, and it'll just speed up the process instead of having me wait and then try to find you?
I missed your great time.
You have everything? All right, so we do have everything. All right, thanks. Thanks, everybody, for that. All right, do you have anything else? We'll get on as soon as we can and try to get this thing resolved. Thank you. Anybody else?
I didn't know they were coming tonight. Sorry.
Anna Buono, Tony Alexander. I didn't know they were coming tonight to talk about this.
The soccer?
The soccer. And I just want to mention that it was a group of five soccer parents who got those lights on that field. We, it took us about a year. We met with Mike, we met with Steve, and we finally got those lights for that field, and we thought, we were told at the time, we said, you know, soccer, the soccer club got these lights by fighting for them, basically, and we would hope that the soccer club would not be charged for using them. And I believe at that time, the offer for getting those nets was put out there at the time, too. So I really, really hope that you guys think about this, and I think three years fee-free isn't enough, but if that's all they're asking for, because, you know, like I said, those lights, I think, were $300,000. So with us, that five of us meeting multiple, multiple times to get those lights, it wouldn't have happened. And one other thing I want to say while I'm up here, I was just gonna mention that the Education Foundation, I know you're gonna mention it later, probably, Patrick, we're having a fundraiser April 5 at the Knights Columbus and Hamden. We need to replenish our funds, because we just granted $9,000 for tables and umbrellas for the courtyard here, and then we granted $1,500 to the elementary school STEM teachers, and the kids are having a great time hatching eggs. So we grant a lot of money, and we would love the support of the community to come out, and it's really, really... The comedy night last year was awesome, so $30, bring your own food.
Where can people find information about this so that they can participate?
It's North Haven Education Foundation, not Association, because a lot of people go to that page. It's North Haven Education Foundation.
Is that all one word?
I don't know, but if you look for it either on Facebook or online, the links are there. And then I also had some posters that I was gonna hopefully be able to put up in the high school somewhere.
If somebody for whatever reason can't remember what you're saying about the website and they want to call the school, does the school have the information to forward that? So if somebody calls up and says, "Hey, I heard you guys are having a fundraiser. I want to participate, but I forgot the website." They have that information.
Is it listed on the actual, yeah, Education Foundation is on the public school website. Yeah, our link is there.
But I'm saying when they answer downstairs, they'll know. They'll be like, "Oh, I don't know about a fundraiser."
The admins know.
Okay, so we're...
Okay, thanks.
Anybody else? Huh? Yeah, it's open. Come on.
Sorry, I'm a little late. What's wrong? My name is Nick Husband. And I'm from 549 Clintonville Road, wrote something again, kind of concerning like last time I was here, but...
Nick, can I just interrupt you for one second? You're already having a hard time. Can you speak into that mic so we can?
All right.
Thank you. Much better.
So I'll just read from here. "I'm a specimen concerned regarding the current practice of allowing girls and boys sharing the bathrooms and locker rooms in schools. It is crucial to thoroughly consider the inflations of these shared restrooms. One significant issue that arises is lack of privacy. Girls and boys have distinct needs and preferences when it comes to utilizing the restroom facilities, and the arrangement of shared spaces can lead to discomfort and feelings of being exposed to individuals of the opposite sex. Separate bathrooms ensure that individuals feel secure and at ease while using the public bathroom. Introducing a mixed-gender approach to restroom facilities threatens to disrupt a longstanding tradition aimed at safeguarding the well-being of both genders. This could potentially cause confusion for children, and furthermore, there is heightened risk of instances of sexual harassment and sexual activity in shared bathrooms. The presence of boys and girls in the same restroom shared may render individuals vulnerable and susceptible to inappropriate behavior. Given different rates of mental maturity between girlies and girls, the potential for misreputation of behavior increases with the shared environment." I do have a few articles. Loudoun County, Virginia, right now is being sued $30 million for school system for a male in the female bathroom. Or in California, recently, male going into female bathroom to flash them, and then when the girls complained, he beat them. A five-year-old in Dakar, Georgia assaulted in the bathroom by the opposite gender. Riverside, California, student beat in the bathroom, and school is now being sued. New Mexico girl is raped in school bathroom by transgender peer. And son Pierre, Wisconsin, school locker room girls, 14 years old, four of them flashed by an 18-year-old. Ensuring privacy and safety, especially for our children and young adults, continues to be a real concern. Separate facilities play a crucial role in offering individuals a sense of security and dignity while utilizing restroom facilities. I encourage this topic be brought to a vote and allow parents to express their concerns, as many of these parents are unaware of this topic being brought into our schools. If you cannot educate our children and protect them from, protect all of our children, then I suggest you step down from your position and allow someone that is able to look at all the circumstances and protect the youth of our children. Thank you."
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, so no one? We're gonna move on to the consent agenda. The resignation of Irika Salerno, K-1 ID teacher at Green Acres Elementary, and the retirement of Francis Bennett, school nurse at Clintonville Elementary. May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Can we just thank everybody for their service, especially like both Ms. Salerno and Nurse Fran, but Nurse Fran has taken such good care of my kiddos at Clintonville for years now. She is a treasure, and she will be missed.
No easy job.
No, it isn't.
So may I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion.
Second.
Second, discussion. Any of you all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. So, um... We're gonna need to appoint a new member to the Ad hoc Athletic Commission. Myself, Randy, and Goldie are already members, so as it stands right now, especially in charge of trying to get the goalie, the goal situation situated, that we would either need yourself, Amanda, or Tyce to at least join in on these conversations. Tyce, I know you're kind of on the road, right? Right now? Amanda, do you have any time to do that?
Sure, yeah, loop me in.
Tyce, do you mind if I just throw, put Amanda on that, because you're kind of in bits of travel, and we're trying to get this thing done ASAP, and then we can sit back and find out who the permanent member will be? Is that okay? Okay, great. So if you're okay with that?
Sounds good.
So Randy, you'll just contact Amanda. We'll get that situated and forward with that.
Sounds great, thank you.
Okay, great. All right, let's have a report from the standing committees. Marty, you want to do aces?
I did not make the aces meeting today.
Okay. Curriculum? That would be Joe, right?
Yes, but Alenny has the report.
Okay. Oh, yep.
Yes.
Yes.
And we will need a new member to replace Maria on that committee as well, and I...
You know what? Let's wait for the appointment, and then we'll kind of juggle the best we can. But we'll make sure that gets done. Thank you, Alenny. Let's go to North Haven Education Foundation.
And it's still my thunder, so I don't have anything to report. It's exactly what I was going to report out about the company net.
Awesome. Okay, let's move on to approval of the following policies. May I have a motion to approve policy 4112.5 and 4212.5, employment and student teacher checks?
I'll make a motion.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion?
I have just a couple of notes from the policy. There are a couple optional sections. There's an optional language on page one that I would encourage the board to include. It adds a higher level to the employment check, so I think it's important to include that language. I could read it aloud for the board if it's a little easier.
But what I think I would like to do is let's just move that to next month, let them be able to read that and go over it.
It's...
Have any questions?
Okay.
Let's do that. So let's just move that forward, because if there's any change to it, then it needs to go through the...
Oh, but I think we did talk about this during the first read.
And it's currently in the...
So you're not adding anything?
No, nothing's added. It's currently optional language. It needs to be voted upon, but it's in, it's been in both reads.
Okay. All of these are...
That's okay. And there's also optional language on page seven that I also encourage the board to adopt, and let me just pull it up really quick here. It again adds a higher level to the teacher and employment checks. I can read it aloud if the board would like, but it says, "For any applicant whose current or most recent employment occurred out of state, the district shall request the applicant provide the district with authorization to access information maintained current concerning the applicant by the equivalent state agency in the state of most recent employment, if the state maintains that information." So it just allows us to... So it just allows us to check out of state for certain issues that may arise. So again, a higher standard. And those are the two optional pieces of language in this policy.
Okay.
So if the board votes as is, that's what will be included in the policy.
Can I just say, we're in discussion now, right?
No, let me get a second. Can I get a second?
Second.
Now discussion.
So I feel strongly that we should include those optional pieces of language because checking the DCF registry is one thing, but like if folks are within a different state, it's really important that we do the due diligence there. So I would really definitely support keeping those optional pieces in. Yeah. Nope.
Agreed. Thais, do you have anything you'd like to ask about it? Marty? Randy? Alani? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved.
Thank you.
May I have a motion to approve policy five one one three and the regulations for student attendance, truancy and chronic absenteeism?
Make a motion?
May I get a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
There is one piece of optional language on page eleven for the monitoring of a monitoring system for absenteeism in the monitoring system for absenteeism in the district. The policy states it's K to eight. I encourage the board to make the system K to twelve, so it monitors all our students in district. If the board approves this policy, it'll approve the K twelve in essence.
Thais? Anything? Marty? Alani? No, Randy? Anybody here? No?
I got one. Just saying thankful, thank you because I think this is really thoughtful about balancing the needs of kiddos to attend school. I don't know if anybody else is seeing the buses that say like kids need to go to school every day. We do believe that, but we also understand that we need to balance medical, emotional and family needs. So I think this policy does a really good job. Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you.
So moved. May I have a motion to approve policy five one three one point nine one one, bullying prevention and intervention?
I'll make a motion.
May I get a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
I do have a couple of.
Go ahead, you go first.
So just so parents know, because this has been a topic that has come up frequently lately. There is, within our current policy and the new updates to the policy, you can fill out a bullying form, which is found on the website, and any student can make an anonymous report of bullying to any school employee. My question about that though is can students who are not being bullied make a report on behalf of students who are being bullied?
Like an upstand or report?
Correct. That's great. And just, you know, so that folks know there have been instances of bullying in our schools, specifically like LGBTQ kids are getting phone calls threatening their lives. This is not on school property, but it is a bullying situation. And in the elementary schools, like some very foul language, like really disgusting language is being used. So I do encourage parents, you can reach out to Board of Ed members, certainly that's fine. But the bullying form and reaching out to your school administrator is really the way to go.
My second.
Thanks.
Thais? Any comment?
Randy, can someone summarize what Amanda said? I didn't understand anything. I'm so sorry.
If you witness bullying, you can still lodge a report. You don't have to be one of the two. You're, okay?
Yeah.
Marty? Randy? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. May I have a motion to approve policy four two one eight and its regulations regarding prohibition of sex discrimination and sexual harassment in the workplace?
Make a motion?
May I get a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
So last year, the board approved the policy, I believe it was either student, I believe it was student, that they increased the standard, the evidence standard within the policy. So it's something called clear, the clear convincing evidence standard. That is a higher level to meet when we do these investigations. So I encourage the board to adopt it for the personnel as well. So that's an option on page, on page twelve.
So if it's approved, that's it?
That's it.
Okay.
Yep.
Any other discussion? Thais, anything? Marty? Randy? Alani? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. May I have a motion to approve policy five one four one point four, reports of suspected abuse or neglect of children of reports of sexual assault of students by school employees?
Make a motion?
May I get a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Any discussion from Zoom? No? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you.
So moved. May I have a motion to approve policy five one four five point eight regarding students in section five oh four of the Rehabilitation Act of nineteen seventy-three and title two, the Americans with Disabilities Act of nineteen ninety?
Make a motion?
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Randy, anything you'd like to talk about in the ad hoc?
Um, no, other than now that Amanda will be at the conference right now, I'm telling you, we can get something else for Adolene next week if possible.
Sure.
Okay, I'm pretty open, so if you can get with Amanda and Goldie and work out a date, I'll make sure that I'm, I'll fit in.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you.
Moving on to the superintendent's report?
Thank you, Bruce. Thais, would you like to share the DEIB report tonight?
Sure. So can you, can you hear me?
Yep.
Yep.
Awesome. Um, so we have had a couple of meetings since our last meeting. And in the first meeting, we discussed the DEIB mission statement. And the DEIB mission statement. Um, and we're giving that to make sure that it was closer to what is actual and what is meaningful, right? So sometimes we give an admission statement because a lot of words, but we wanted to make sure that it really was okay. Was relevant to what we're doing here with the part three of the DEIB. Um, the rap is okay after the news.
Yes, please do. I'm going to put it up on the board now. You can go right ahead.
So the statement that we have drafted right now is is our mission that we're given public schools to create, nurture and sustain the global inclusive culture where differences drive in and out of things. So, um, you know, we just thought that was also a real priority here. We are, we are, um, and so we can, um, especially with, um, I am, um, staying. Patrick, if you have more things you'd like to add to that?
Sure, thank you. I, the, the mission statement was originally drafted through the High School Diversity Club, through support with, with Patrick Lawrence. And it was, it was cumbersome. They did a really good job. Um, we, as Thais said, just refined it a little bit to make it more actionable. But we really appreciated the, the student input because, you know, this has helped lead the students and for the students, so it shouldn't be all only created by adults, so. But everything, I agree with what Thais, and thank you for presenting this tonight.
Does anybody have any questions for Thais?
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, Thais, go ahead.
But were you asking about the statement?
I was gonna, I was gonna ask the board if they had any questions for you. Can you go back to full screen, please?
Okay, yes.
Marty, do you have any questions for Thais? Randy? Alani? Alani? Okay, anybody else have any questions?
No, I'm fine. Thank you.
Really good work.
Can I just add one, one thing that this does not take the place of the, the board and the district's original mission statement. It's meant to complement it and just put another, a different lens to the work.
May I have a motion to approve the draft of North Haven Public Schools DEIB mission statement as presented?
Make a motion?
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Uh, just before we take a final vote, I would like to.
Marty had his hand off.
Marty did. I would just like to say, that's a great job. I know you guys did a lot of work on that and it was not an easy task. Marty, what do you have?
Yeah, I have a follow hearing.
Oh, that's who's reading?
Uh, it is.
Oh, okay, okay.
Are you all set? Now Marty, do you need clarification on something? Okay. Thank you. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. We're gonna skip the soccer proposal.
Yeah, we kinda did that.
We kinda did that. We're gonna move right into the assistant superintendent's report.
Okay, this evening I would just like to provide a quick update on the science of re.
I'm sorry, can I just?
Yes. Of course.
Oh.
Sorry, Thais.
Let me tell you, it was gone. I'm sorry, Thais.
No, that's okay. I want to be long with it today. I did want to, yes, um, I also acknowledge that we, as we do, um, the celebrations that we are, um, we're observing within schools, including women's history. We're hosting a lot of St. Patrick's Day. I know, um, we've got some haircuts going on. Some of the elementary schools we have come and, you know, the Thais, so we are, during, so we're considering that. And finally, just to acknowledge that our last evening, we had the opportunity to speak with our elementary administration regarding their experience and, um, and their experience as we all have these schools. Um, it's a place to be, I mean, I think, um, what we walk away and have is the, uh, you know, creating opportunity and sharing on each other and talk about, um, what's working well and nice and opportunity for each other. So just wanted to make sure I shared that with you.
It's the lag. It's that lag that's getting. Thank you for that report. Now if you would go back to the assistant superintendent's.
Okay, so just a quick update on the science of reading. Since our presentation last month, Caitlin, along with one of our teachers, Sarah Christie from Green Acres, and I visited a demo day in Marlboro Public Schools and watched Bookworms, which was one of the programs we had talked about, a compendium program in action, met with the school's administrators and teachers. It was very informative. Um, and we were able to really just have very down-to-earth conversation with them. We are following up with another literacy planning session where our teachers will be able to have a in-depth presentation, watch some demo lessons and go through the materials a little bit more deeply. So I will continue to update you on that. And my second item is the wonderful pictures you see on the screen. Funded by the grant Anna talked about from the North Haven Education Foundation. Each elementary STEM lab has been outfitted thanks to them with all the equipment needed to hatch eggs. Rich DePalma, one of our high, our middle school Italian teachers and owner of Revilo, I think it's Revelo, Ravello Farm, provided the, um, the fertilized eggs to each STEM classroom. So as Anna had said, the kids are so excited and, um, we've been watching them. I get updates from the STEM teachers and whenever I'm in the buildings, I stop in and see. And we can see that, that the chicks kind of moving around in there. So we are hopeful around the twenty-second that we may have some chicks. We will keep them in the school for about a week and then we will return them to the farm. So many thanks to everybody involved with that.
That's really great.
What's that?
Awesome. That's it.
All right, we're gonna move on to the interim chief operating officer's report.
Good evening, everyone, and thank you. For, for the February report that I shared with you, was included both the, the Munis financial reports. And there are just a few lines. We have spoken about these lines previously, but I would like to rela, highlight them again this evening. One of the lines we've spoken about is line one one two R. This is our reimbursable wages. This is our pre-K program at the high school that kind of operates in and out. Um, I have received questions as to why that it does tend to be in a negative because we do have to wait a couple months before we do receive checks. We have booked a total of thirty-five thousand, eight hundred and seventy-four dollars and seventy-seven cents towards this line already. And so that's kind of the in and out that you see. And so while it's still in the negative, we're just awaiting the next check for them. So that comes and we can pay that back. In line five one seven A, regular transportation. As we've spoken about, this line is currently over due to a, an additional expense that we needed to address. Through grant funding, we've already booked a total of six thousand and forty-one dollars to reduce the overage that was there and we are waiting. And we just received it actually at the start of this week, an additional two thousand, eight hundred and eighty-five dollars that will be further booked against that line to reduce that negative balance. Finally, as we've all been watching our tuition line, which is over due to unanticipated special education costs, we have received the first payment of our excess cost installments for this year, which the first payment was six hundred and fourteen thousand dollars and, uh, six hundred and fourteen thousand dollars. With that being said, we have applied that against that tuition line to further reduce that in order to help balance those overages at this time. Included in the report is also the monthly transfer report. Any transfers that cross object codes, as always, are highlighted in yellow. So that's why those do stand out. In my report also, I have presented what is currently in our special education reserve account, capital reserve account, the non-lapsing account, our working, workers' compensation and medical reserve accounts. So I'd like to pause there and see if there are any questions from anyone from the board.
Answered most of them, probably, if that's okay. Thank you. Um, just one quick question. Where is the transportation report from M and J this month? Did we get one?
It should be in, we, the report from John Shipman.
Was it in there?
Yes, it is.
Maybe I missed it. I'll, I'll, I'll take a look. Thank you.
And I can give you my copy.
No, it's okay.
Okay. But yeah, see, uh, we, we got that in time for this one.
Thank you.
Moving along to transportation, there was a copy of the report that was included in the packet. Um, and as requested by the Board of Education, we have port, posted a formal request for proposals for transportation vendors, bless you, for North Haven Public Schools. This RFP has been formally posted on the district and town of North Haven's websites. Bids will be accepted until Wednesday, April tenth, two thousand twenty-four at two PM, at which time the bid submitted and in accordance with the bid documents will be publicly opened and read aloud. Questions?
Have we gotten any bids yet? Do we know if we've gotten any?
So we've received questions from possible vendors, but no formal submissions of bids yet, as of yet.
I would think you're not gonna get any of the bids till that last day or two. Till all the questions are answered and they're gonna try to gather whatever, whatever other information they can to make sure that their bid is complete as possible.
Just a quick update for Cafeteria Food Services. As we mentioned, we are installing new walk-in coolers at both Green Acres and Clintonville. We've identified who we wanted to go with through recommendations from other districts who have done similar work. And we are working with Warehouse Restaurant Supply Company out of Waterbury, Connecticut. The Green Acres Cooler, as we've mentioned before, we'll actually get that as quoted for thirty-nine thousand, six hundred and thirty-four dollars, which is lower than anticipated. That will be paid through awarded grant funding specified for that. And then the Clintonville Cooler, um, quoted at thirty-eight thousand, nine hundred and twenty-four will be funded through cafeteria funds, through excess cafeteria funds that we have. So this evening, um, within your packet, and we, we did share draft version previously, is on July first, two thousand twenty-four, Public Act twenty, twenty-three, one, six, seven, section ten went into effect. And part of this mandate states that no later than March fifteenth, two thousand twenty-four, each fifteenth, two thousand twenty-four, each local and regional board of education shall submit the increasing educator diversity plan, um, subscribed in the subsections as amended to the act. And so over the past few months, we've had a committee made up of, um, both, uh, Patrick Lawrence and Rustali from the high school, as well as Amy Rapp and Paris Godbout, Jody Wilcox, Sandra Pranetta, and Chris McLaughlin, and we've met multiple times in an effort to draft the plan that was in the format that was, uh, provided by the state, with very clear action steps that we need to, we feel we need to actually put into motion in terms of when we are looking to bring new staff into the committee, excuse me, into the district, how we go about looking very carefully with very well-thought-out action steps to take an effort to further diversify our workforce, and this particular plan that we've shared with you and have in the packet, um, is up for your approval. We do have to submit it formally to the state, all districts need to do that, so there'll be a lot of submissions hopefully tomorrow across the state. I would ask first if there are any questions about the plan we've, we've created, and then respectfully ask for the board's approval to submit, and if the state were to ask for any revisions, provide the authority to the superintendent or his or her designee to make those changes for resubmitment. So I'd like to pause right there for any questions regarding this plan.
Tyis?
Hi, Tyis.
Hi, Ty. Start over, Ty? We couldn't hear the first three words.
Can you hear any better now?
Yeah, yes.
Just out of curiosity, has the state defined what diversity means? We're not, like, they're saying to diversify, but what, what is, what does that mean?
And so that, that's a very fair and great question, what they're, they're taking a look at is, are districts taking a, a conscious and concerted effort to hire staff for underrepresented groups that better reflect their overall student population, based upon the idea that students need to have teachers in the classroom that they can connect to. Um, and so that's really been the effort of this plan, and that's really what they've been looking for with this particular mandate.
So that includes gender, the race, the, correct?
Includes all of those pieces with not, with an understanding that we're, we want to keep all of those pieces, as well as making sure we're, or hiring highly qualified teachers with all of those parameters in place.
Yeah, the, the expectation, the baseline is that anybody who brings, um, also, gets the base, but I just want to make sure, you know, you just, you know, there's any, there's like, that, you know, I, I, I was talking about in class in the elementary schools, it's great to have a male teacher just for, you know, a different view and different perspective for, for the kids, um, you know, that's supposed to be, but I, that's why I want to make sure that we are finding what diversity is, that it's, it's, it's not just race, it's, it's gender, there's, you know, age, and, you know, I know we're always looking at newer professionals coming in, but there's a list of, um, of, um, of those of us that are a little stuck in, and, um, so it's just a matter of making sure that we're looking at all of those things, not just, um, any one.
Agreed.
I think the, the paper, I was looking at it before, I think it, it does list, I know what you're saying, case, I think it does list age, gender, race, culture, ethnicity, um, so it lists, it lists a very comprehensive, what, like, what it is. And I guess, I just, that caveat of representative of what our population looks like, and just, you know, the fact that, you know, we're a population, what the majority is versus, you know, we're, we're growing, what the trends are for, um, families coming in, I want to make sure that we are, are thinking about that.
And, and that's how we, Tyis, to respond to that, that's how we tried to develop the plan so that it was a plan that could grow and change over time, to meet, to meet specifically what you just addressed.
Does anybody else have any questions?
I'm good.
Yeah?
It's good, yeah.
Good.
And then finally, uh, with all of my requests this evening, um, I am presenting two donations. Um, one is a donation from Global Partners LP in partnership with ExxonMobil Educational Alliance Program. Um, we've received these grants before, these donations from this particular group, um, they've actually nominated North Haven Middle School to be the recipient of actually a one thousand dollar donation, the letter they sent us was five hundred, and, but they gave us a check for one thousand, and we said, is this, do we get to keep the one thousand or have to exchange it? They said, no, the thousand is yours. Um, these grants are given yearly, they're actually donation grants, um, are given yearly to selected schools to be used towards science, technology, engineering, or mathematics and STEM programming. If approved, these funds will be used under the direction of building administration in collaborations with the district's science coordinator. Finally, the second donation I'm requesting the board to approve tonight, um, Mr. Mastriano has been in contact with David and Jacqueline Dwyer of North Haven, Connecticut, who have graciously, graciously offered to donate two pieces of specialized equipment to support student needs within the district. They have offered to donate a Zing supine standard and a Riften Pacer gate trainer. Pictures of these equipment have been provided with this, uh, month's report, and this equipment would be utilized based upon identified needs within our school district. And so, uh, we respectfully ask that, uh, the board would approve the donation of both pieces of equipment. So that concludes my report at this time.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve the monthly financial report, including the recommended transfers?
Make a motion?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. May I have a motion to approve a one thousand dollar donation to North Haven Middle School from Global Partners LP with ExxonMobil Educational Alliance Program?
I'll make a motion?
Second.
Any discussion?
Can I just ask a quick question about that? Is anything tied to that money, or it's just here, have your money, go for it?
It's really just here, have your money and go for it, but we do want to make sure that in good faith-
Yeah.
-we adhere to the specifics we have provided.
Thank, I, I, I extend my thanks to that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. May I have a motion to approve a twenty-one hundred dollar donation of specialized student support equipment, North Haven Public Schools, from David and Jacqueline Dwyer?
Make a motion?
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Would just like to thank them for their donation. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. May I have a motion to approve North Haven Public Schools' increasing educator diversity plan for submission to the Connecticut State Department of Education and authorize the superintendent of schools or equivalent administrator-manager of schools to execute any revisions required by enforcement of or changes to the law or similar circumstances governing such plan?
Make a motion?
The second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So moved.
Thank you.
Interim Director of Student Services Report.
Good, thank you, good evening, everyone. My report tonight will highlight events at the middle and high schools surrounding post-secondary planning. Last Thursday, the middle school hosted Parent University. This unique learning opportunity provided a platform for middle school parents to share with our middle school students about their current profession, what type of education is required, and their personal connection to their career. We had over thirty parents present, providing all students with four different presentations. Overall, the event was a huge success, and it was well-received by our students. A big thank you to Kayla Montavo, our head counselor, and Britton Rolston, one of our science teachers, in addition to our middle school administration for coordinating this wonderful event for our students. And lastly, during the month of March, I know that Sarah had highlighted this as well earlier in her report, the school counselors at the high school level will be meeting individually with all junior parents and students to discuss their child's post-secondary plans. These individualized pro, this individualized process promotes strong dialogue on next steps with a primary focus on career opportunities, higher education, and scholarships. Students are encouraged to follow up with their counselor for additional support. And that is all I have for this evening.
Thank you.
Thank you. That's for our, our current juniors.
Anybody have any questions?
You're welcome.
Anybody else have any questions for Anthony?
Great, thank you very much.
Okay, thanks, Anthony. Okay, I'd like to move on to public comment, anything that has, uh, agenda items.
I'm back. Um, a question about the policies that you just approved tonight, um, I know that the policies are listed on the, the, the Board of Education site-
Yeah.
-but these are updated policies, was there somewhere that the public could have gone to see what you were voting on?
No.
No?
No.
Okay.
No.
So the public only gets to see what these are when they're posted to the site, and are they voted on, are most policies voted on on a yearly basis?
No.
No?
Most of these pol-
Because I do, a lot of them are twenty-twenty-one.
Some are twenty-fifteen.
Yeah, I've seen those too.
So a lot of them need, especially the ones we've been hitting most recently, are, um, up, updates to legislation that require updates to policy, so we're trying to stay on top of those, uh, more readily.
Um, the bullying policy, was there something, um, dramatic that changed within that policy? No?
Nothing dramatic.
Okay. Um, and the bullying form, I know, I know, I've seen it on there. Does, does that really make a difference if someone fills that out versus just going to the administrators and?
Most times the administrator will ask the person that's going to them to fill it out-
To fill it out.
-with a written record, um, and it also triggers an investigation on the administrative level.
Okay, so they have to fill it out for an actual investigation to happen?
We can also fill it out with the parents if they choose to, just so we have some written document we can refer back to during the investigation.
Okay, all right, um, and I just wanted to say that, um, it's not only one group being bullied, um, there are a lot of kids being bullied, and it, I mean, it's been forever that kids are bullied in school, unfortunately. Um, it's, you know, children who look a certain way, act a certain way, have a certain, you know, uh, certain religious, um, culture, race, even the kids that, those who don't think that are being bullied. Um, it's happening, and there's a fight at the middle school probably every other week, I just heard of one again today. Um, so I understand there's, there's things trying to happen to change what the culture in the, in the middle school, and I really hope that when they get to the high school, we don't see that, we don't know, because, and I don't know if I've mentioned this before, but when I asked administrators in the high school if they see this continue into the high school, they say they're not really sure. Is there communication between, let's say, eighth grade, you know, like administrators at the middle school level going into ninth grade saying, hey, these kids gave us a problem in the middle school, maybe you should keep an eye on them when they come to the high school, and is there anything, any records that show, once they get, not records, but like, you know, when they get to the high school, or is it continuing? Um, it seems to me like there's no knowledge, once they leave the middle school, of, you know, how they were in middle school, like data on, does it stop once they get to the high school, is my question really?
So-
Like, does the high school, ninth grade especially, do they see what's happening at the middle school level, does it, is it happening there as well?
So I'm sorry that you were told that they're not sure, um, there's not only communication between administrators, but also support staff as well to improve the transition from eighth to ninth, from fifth to sixth as well.
Yeah.
So, yes, it continues, we have a system with Power School and disciplinary logs, uh, go right through, you know, K to twelve, so that's something that, uh, administrators and support staff can utilize to see, um, you know, behaviors or grades, whatever, it's all, you guys have access to Power School too, so-
Yeah, yeah.
Um, you can see a lot of information within that, and that's only one snapshot, so there's, there's extensive communication, uh, between, especially going, well, I should say, in those transition years, even from pre-K to kindergarten, there's extensive, uh, communication, so I'm sorry you were given that information.
Yeah, I was told that a couple months ago, um, yeah, I'm just hoping that the middle school can figure it out because it's-
I'll follow up to it.
Yeah. Okay.
Thank you. Anybody else? Good time, take that.
Hi.
Hi.
I'm Michelle Goyamo, Curtis Court. I wasn't really planning to speak tonight, but I wanted to say thank you to the North Haven Education Foundation, to Rich DePalma and Ravello Farm, and to the STEM teachers and all of the staff involved in the chicken hatching, because-
It's all the buzz.
It is super exciting, my son, um, is very excited about the chickens hatching next week. My school does it every single year, and it doesn't matter how many times we do it, our hatch day is next Thursday, so we're like right before my son's hatch day, and we're counting down, and it is so cool to have chickens and little ducks like running the hallway for a whole week, it's just, I hope it's something that we're able to continue, I hope it's something that they're able to do every year, because it's, 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 um, so enriching for the kids, you know, it's just, it's a great program, and I'm super excited that it's here in North Haven, and I hope it can continue, and thank you to everyone that made it happen, thank you.
Anybody else? All right, seeing no one, may I have a motion to adjourn the March fourteenth, twenty-twenty-three regular meeting of the Board of Education?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion?
It's twenty-twenty-four.
Did I say, oh yeah, not just read it like, uh, I don't know what year. Twenty-twenty-four. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved.
Patrick.
Thank you, next meeting is, uh, April eleventh, six-thirty P.M., right here. Thanks for showing up.
The preceding program is brought to you in part through a grant from the town of North Haven.